I can hear you fine. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
See several commissioners that have joined us?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi, everyone.
How are you? Hi there, Ms. Fryerson. We see you today.
Yeah, I'm doing it for my sister. I'm such a good sister. How you doing?
You're doing great. Good to see you all.
You too.
Hey, this is Gary. Can y'all hear me?
Hey, Gary. All right, we can hear you fine. Brother Carlisle and Brother Yaki, good to see you guys.
Happy to be here.
See you there. Mr. Brown.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Oh, we got you.
Okay, good. I just had to de-mute.
I think I see planning director there, Clayton.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Carr is coming in. Price, I guess we'll wait another minute or so to give other commissioners an opportunity to come in. Mr. Price, are we ready? Are your staffs ready?
If you would just give us a moment, Mr. Chair, we're just trying to get the streaming going.
Okay, great. Mr. Price, how are we coming along? Mr. Price?
Just a moment, Mr. Chair. I think we're getting it.
Just checking in. Okay. For the news of the public that have joined us, we are working on getting our streaming services where they need to be. So give us just a few more minutes and we'll get started here in just a second. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm Mr. Price.
Yeah, they're still working on that right now for the Bill of the Stream meeting, but it is being recorded. And if we need to, and if we need to, we'll see if we can put that on the certain, on the website at another time. But they're working on getting this streaming to the public.
Okay, great.
So we can either, you know, wait a moment or we can go ahead and proceed with. I think by the time we, you know, you, we do everything at the beginning of the meeting, by the time we get to the cases. See if we can get this to work, okay?
Okay, well, what we'll do, Price, is we'll check back in with you right before we get into the cases, okay?
Okay, then.
Okay, that sounds good. So let me call the December 7th planning commission meeting to order it. Please allow me to read into the record. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was posted on the radio, TV, newspapers, and persons requesting notification, and posted on the county administration building bulletin board for persons interested in attending our Zoom meeting. So we thank not only the public, but for the commissioners for your attendance on this December 7th meeting. The first item on our agenda today is our consent agenda. And the chair will entertain a motion on our consent agenda.
Chairman, just asking really quick if we had any of the public request to speak on any of our approval items?
I believe I had a couple.
Yes, we have underbried cases. We have, okay, so what you have, you have four cases. The first case, which was case 20-036 MA, we have a, we had a request for deferral to February. So y'all would not be hearing that case at this time. We'd already delivered the packages by the time we got the request for the deferral. And the only case we have comments, actually both for and against, is the fourth item, which is case 20-040 MA.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price. Well, as Collins, based upon that information, would you like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I would. I'd admit I'm doing a couple of things at once right now. Sorry about that. But yeah, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment that we pull off the first case with the deferral and the fourth, and the fourth case for which we will hear public comment.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. We accept the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by roll call vote. Mr. Price, are you going to do our roll call vote for us?
Yes, I was just making the notes. Okay, so those in favor, Gilchrist?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yaki?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Fryerson?
Aye.
We unanimously approved?
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Price. So we'll move to our first case. Mr. Price, are we streaming now?
We are not, sir.
Okay. Well, for the benefit of the public, we certainly want to just reiterate that we will be placing our meeting online for those who may not have an opportunity to weigh in. Obviously, as we go through this case, we'll continue to check in to make sure that our streaming services are being worked on. But please be assured that for those that are interested in the cases that will be coming for the commission today, that this information will be available online in the not-too-distant future. Okay?
Okay.
So we'll move forward to our first case.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, sir?
Repeat entirely what I just said?
No, sir. Just.
I'll repeat that our streaming services are being worked on at this point. And we would encourage the public to weigh in because our commission meeting will be posted at some point in the not-too-distant future. And with that being said, we will move forward with our first case.
Yes, sir. And also, I would like to point out that this meeting will be, these items will be taken up by county council on December 17th. And which, that meeting will also, that meeting will be streamed and their comments will also be provided to the county council and also read into the record.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Okay, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready for the first case, wherever you are.
All right, item, case, item number four, which is case 20-040 MA. The applicant is Kevin Steelman. And the applicant is real estate to rezone 15.14 acres from Ru, which is RU, to RSLD, which is single-family, residential, single-family, low density. And the property is located off of Ramaphon Road. Texting up number 17-800-04-70. Staff recommends, staff recommends approval of this request as we feel that it's in compliance with the recommendations and outlines of the comprehensive plan. The proposed residential district is encouraged with the land uses and desired development pattern again of the comprehensive plan for the neighborhood medium-density designation in those of the surrounding area. So for that, staff recommends approval of this request.
Okay, are there any questions for the staff on this case? Surprise, do we have any comments for the record from the applicant?
Yes, sir. This is from the applicant. For the RSLD zoning on Ramaphon Road, that will be considered. I want to point out that we will be cooperating with Great Southern Homes for access to our community. And we'll share their entry road, which has already been permitted by South Carolina Department of Transportation, to include turn lane improvements on Ramaphon Road. As such, we will not be creating a new curb cut for our development. We plan to combine our parcel with the small parcel owned by Great Southern that is cut off from the rest of their property by a large wetland and develop a single community. Thanks, Kevin Steelman. That is from the applicant.
Okay, are there any questions for the applicant? No questions for the applicant. I'm surprised that we have other persons signed up to speak on this case?
Yes, we received, we received one of the comments a couple of times. And I believe that was because they came from three separate family members. But the verbiage is the exact same. So I would just be reading it one time, but on behalf of the three members of the family. My name is, my name is Brenda W. Timmy. And I live at 178 Ramaphon Road. I oppose any development on this road because there is already too much traffic on this road. There are times during the day I cannot even get out of my driveway onto Ramaphon Road unless someone lets me out. My husband and son, who also live at this address, oppose any development here as well. Your site was temporarily out of service every time I tried to access it. So I have no idea what is being planned. But we want it on record that the three of us are opposed based on the already deplorable congestion on the road already. I want someone to email me the information about what has been proposed as your site is not accessible. We pay too much in taxes to be this poorly informed. Sincerely, Brenda W. Timmy, Clarence Timmy Jr., Clarence Timmy Sr. That is it for that, that comment. We have one other comment, but that is it from the Timmings.
Okay.
Yeah, and for the record, Mr. Chair and the rest of our planning commission staff did reach out to Ms. Timmy. And we provided them the information we have. At this time, we're just taking up every zoning of the property. So there was no additional information to share with.
Mr. Price, I can, Mr. Price, I can barely hear you, so there way we can get you a little closer to the mic.
Are you hearing that yet?
Just, just a little bit. Can, am I the only person that having problem hearing Price? Okay.
Hard to hear.
No, I can barely hear him either.
Yeah, me too.
Audio in and out.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Much better. Other commissioners, can you hear? Okay. All right, great.
Makes it better.
So would you care for me to read that statement again into the record?
If you would, that would be great, yes.
Okay, again, and I'll apologize for everything. But again, I'm reading one statement, but it comes from three residents. They're all family members, but they're, the information, the comments they provided to staff were the exact same. So we are, I'm just reading it for one, reading one comment, but on behalf of three family members. My name is Brenda W. Timmy, and I live at 178 Ramaphon Road. I oppose any development on this road because there is already too much traffic on this road. There are times during the day I cannot even get out of my driveway onto Ramaphon Road unless someone gets, lets me out. My husband and son, who also live at this address, oppose any development here as well. Your site was temporarily out of service every time I tried to access it. So I have no idea what is being planned. But we want it on record that the three of us are opposed based on the already deplorable congestion on this road already. I want someone to email me the information about what has been proposed as your site is not accessible. We pay too much in taxes to be this poorly informed. Sincerely, Brenda, Brenda W. Timmy, Clarence Timmy Jr., Clarence Timmy Sr.
Okay.
And again, while stating previously is that staff did reach out to Ms. Timmy to provide as much information as we could. But at this time, all we have before us is a rezoning request. There were no additional plans or information to provide to her about what was going to be there or how it would be developed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price. Are there any additional?
Yes, we have one, I'm sorry, we have one other comment.
Okay.
Enough is enough. Today, I can look out my window and watch the beginning of a large housing development directly across the street from me. It is in itself, it in itself has displaced multiple species of wildlife and destroyed the land that Mother Nature has blessed us. To continue with this, this destruction will be a slap in the face to those of us who choose to live here. The builder will make his money and run. The county will receive revenue from the taxes and what we do, and what do we get? More traffic, more burdens on the schools, and less peace of mind, which is the reason we put down stakes here. I invite you to come to my home and try to get out of my driveway. Charlene Lawyer, 164 Ramaphon Road. And that, those are all the comments that we have for this case.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price. Are there any questions for our staff on this case?
I know.
So Dennis?
Yes, I know the applicant stated they're going to do something with Great Southern. So I take it they're doing something. so I take it they're doing something with Great Southern, that's directly, if you're looking at the map, directly to the right, but they said they're not gonna put anything out onto Rhoma Pond, they're just gonna use the already, uh, built roads from Great Southern?
That is correct.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Branham.
Just to clarify, so is that the road between the subject parcel and the parcel that's nearest to it, that's labeled Town of Blythewood? Is it the road in between those two parcels?
Or you're looking at what's on the map that was provided to you in your package?
Yes. The zoning classifications map.
Yes, sir, it would be that, it will be that, what looks like a road that's on the right of the parcel that is labeled Town of Blythewood, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branham. Any additional comments from commissioners? The chair will entertain a motion on this case. Case number twenty dash zero four zero M A. No motions on the case?
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, send this case two zero zero four zero M A to, uh, council with recommendation of approval. The, uh, four factors that were asked to balance, looking at comprehensive plan, um, the request for low density seems to be in harmony with the comprehensive plans, uh, designation of this area as neighborhood medium-density. And, um, it, it also, that, that zoning classification would be in general harmony with the surrounding parcels, uh, particularly, uh, the one that's residential, uh, estate, and then, um, not far, I guess, it's south, at least on the map I'm looking at, from Rhoma Pond Road, there's additional parcels which are already zoned with the residential, uh, load density. Without question, there will be an impact on the surrounding properties by way of, um, the same types of traffic impacts that are typically experienced by residential development. And then, again, just the justification being some additional, uh, residential development that doesn't seem to be too different from a lot of the type of development that's happening in that area. We, we do, I believe, I don't, speaking out of turn, but, um, many of us have expressed in the past sympathies for, um, individuals that reside in areas that have, uh, previously had much larger tracts of land that have been much more rural, and are experiencing the impacts of, uh, the growth of our area. It is very much a balancing act when it comes to the, uh, factors that we are charged with, uh, weighing and making our recommendations, um, and so in this case, it's just by judgment that, uh, the factors, uh, for approval would outweigh those for disapproval, and that's the basis for making the motion.
Mr. Chair, I second the motion, this is Fryerson.
Okay, Commissioner Branham and Commissioner Fryerson, it's been moved and properly seconded, in that we sent case number, uh, two zero zero four zero M A forward to council with the recommendation of approval based upon staff recommendation. All in favor, signify by a roll call vote.
Does Gilchrist?
And if those of you who are not speaking, if you could please mute your phones, that'd be great.
Okay, so Mr. Gilchrist?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Branham?
Aye.
Fryerson?
Aye.
That unanimously passes?
Okay, thank you very much, and again, we are a recommending body to county council, and they will be on their Zoom call, I believe, on December the seventeenth, is that right, Mr. Price?
That is correct.
Uh, which is coming up soon, so for, for those that, um, have, have viewed this case via the public, feel free to come back, uh, to the council Zoom meeting on December the seventeenth. Thank you very much. Okay, um, next on the agenda of the, of the business, the election of officers.
Yes, sir, um, Mr. Chair and our, uh, rest of the planning commission. Um, I know normally when we do the election of officers, we tend to do it at the beginning of the year, um, and it's, and during that meeting, the, um, whoever, if there's a change in officers, uh, the new chair or vice chair would then take their positions and start that meeting. Um, staff elected to place this at the, on the December, um, uh, meeting agenda for, um, the planning commission, um, a couple of reasons. Um, one, and I did confirm this, and I apologize first, I want to apologize to Ms. Carnes, because I should have gotten back to her on this, but I did check, uh, Mr. Gilchrist used the chair and Ms. Carnes also as the vice chair. Your terms are scheduled to end in April, um, of this year, so, um, council, you know, will be looking to appoint replacements to your positions, and so, and what, looking at this from a staff standpoint, um, if it were determined that we were going to do new officers, and again, this is the decision that you as a planning commission would need to make, but if there are gonna be new officers, uh, for the twenty twenty-one year, we would then be able to, you know, work with the officers from a staff standpoint, and let them get acclimated to the positions, um, prior to starting the meeting in February.
Okay. Any just, any additional questions for the staff?
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I, just add some comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm glad that, uh, it was placed on the agenda today, just so that we have an opportunity to discuss it. It does feel like it's important to talk about it, um, earlier rather than later, just due to the nature of the circumstances with, uh, both our chair and vice chair wrapping up their terms at the same time. Um, again, I think we just heard that, that it's in April. Uh, from my understanding, we don't have a January meeting, so our first meeting in the calendar year twenty twenty-one would be in February. And, and as Mr. Price indicated, um, looking at the rules of procedure, Article One, Section Two specifies that the officers are to be elected for one-year terms at the first meeting of the commission each calendar year, so it, it certainly seems like that is the appropriate thing to do, and to strictly comply with the rules of procedure of our commission as, as they're written, so I, I do think that we should give a fair amount of weight to that. I'm super appreciative of both the chair and the vice chair, uh, I know that they know that, I'm so grateful for them, uh, for you, and for, um, the rest of the commissioners that are, that are gonna continue on. It is very much, at least a priority to me, as one of those that will continue on, that we have some sort of certainty beyond that April timeframe, knowing that, uh, even as much as our, uh, Mr. Gilchrist and Ms. Carnes might remain as, as holdover members of the commission, uh, I wouldn't want to subject the commission to kind of a surprise loss of both our chair and vice chair after that April, April timeframe. So, uh, you know, again, this is just my two cents, but I'd be comfortable waiting until February, uh, to, to comply with, with the rule, I mean, it does say that, that's shall, it shall be, the election shall be conducted on that date. I'm happy to defer to that, I could certainly see the wisdom to at least having discussions now, uh, and potentially taking a vote, where maybe the officer's, uh, terms might begin in February. So I, I'm, I'm kind of inclined to potentially move to defer the election until February, but I very much want to hear from the rest of the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, this is Fryerson here, I'm a stickler for rules. If our rules say that the election shall take place at the beginning of the year, I am for following the letter of the law. I'd like to add one caveat, um, when I became a commissioner's commissioner several years ago, one of the requirements was that the new commissioners, um, have orientation and training. I availed myself of that opportunity, and I think that that is crucial. Uh, no matter whom we choose and when we choose the people to become our chair and vice chair, I think it is mandatory that we avail ourselves of the training necessary to do the job well and represent the citizens well. So, in conclusion, I too, um, wish that we defer the vote today because the rules say shall do it at the beginning of the new year, and I would emphasize again that, um, I have many years of experience, I'm interested in becoming an officer, but I just wanted to mention that it is crucial that new members coming aboard, or even those who have recently become members, take advantage of the training that we are required to take.
Thank you, Commissioner Price, and I thank, uh, Commissioner Dennis.
Yes, uh, looking at this, I wholeheartedly agree.
I can barely hear you all, I don't know, something's wrong with the audio.
Can everybody hear me?
Can hear you a little bit, I could barely hear Mr. Gilchrist.
Okay, can you hear me a little bit better now, Mr. Fryerson?
Just a little bit.
Okay, let me see if I can move some stuff around here, okay?
Okay, uh, what I was gonna say is, uh, you know, we talk about transparency in government, and I really feel, and I believe wholeheartedly in this position, that the transparency should be sticking to the rules that we have in the planning commission rules of procedure. I think we should go ahead and wait till that first meeting, which would be in February, to, uh, place a vote, only because we, if we start changing things around, that leaves the presidents to do it in the future. And that can set bad visions for other people, so if we have these rules already in place, we must follow them. If we do not like them in the future, then we can change them as a group and make them better. But as of right now, we must follow the letter that's in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Any additional comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, um, and, uh, given planning commission members, um, in no way to persuade you, um, the direction of your, uh, vote today, or whichever, um, action, whichever way you choose to, um, to take up this item, I just want to point out that Article Six, um, of the rules of procedures for the planning commission, which is rules, adoption and amendment, Section Two Amendment, these rules may only be amended at a regular meeting of the commission by a majority vote of the mi- of the members of the commission. So again, while you're correct, while you do have rules, the planning commission at any time can waive our, uh, waive the rules, or make some, um, amendments to it. I just wanted to point it out going in, you know, in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any additional comments from the commission? So I, I believe we have a motion on the floor to, uh, defer the election of officers until our February meeting. Um, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second.
All right, so we're moving to properly second that we defer the election of officers until our February meeting. All in favor, signify by a roll call vote.
Okay, um, Gilchrist?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Branham?
Aye.
Fryerson?
Aye.
Okay, so unanimously passes, it'll be deferred until February meeting.
Okay, item B, the other business is the adoption of the twenty twenty-one calendar. Surprise.
Yes, sir, um, that was included in your package, uh, staff has gone over those dates to, um, hopefully we ensure that there will be no conflicts either by holidays, um, which you will notice, some of your dates have, uh, been changed to, you know, maybe a Thursday or a date not, um, the, normally the first Monday of the month. Um, so we went over our calendars, we always do, again, to ensure there'll be no conflicts with holidays, or, and, and I understand that this, um, the pandemic that we're in now, uh, there were times when we would look at the agenda to ensure that there will be no conflicts with the use of council chambers, so I'm not sure exactly what will happen in the future, um, going into twenty twenty-one, but we feel that these days, um, we shouldn't offer any, um, conflicts with use of chambers or with holidays.
Okay, any additional comments, uh, uh, concerns about the adoption of the twenty twenty-one calendar for next year?
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Right.
I was just curious whether there had been any previous discussion among the commission or among staff about, uh, potentially having the meeting be at, at a, a more accessible time than three o'clock in the afternoon for, uh, any members of the public who have an interest? I'm just curious whether that's a topic that's come up, and, and whether there would be any, any interest in that, or if that's, um, not possible for reasons that are, are, are not, uh, clear to me.
Commissioner, I appreciate you bringing that con- that, that point up, um, several years ago, our planning commission meetings were at one o'clock. Uh, and this commission actually took that issue up, uh, to, uh, try and make a time that was more convenient for more of the public to be a part of those discussions. Um, and, and I certainly, uh, would concur with you, with your observation to look at a time that is more convenient for, uh, the public to, uh, have more of an opportunity to participate. So, um, y- you know, I, I welcome the opportunity to, to, for the commissions to weigh in on that, but, um, anytime we can create an environment where the public can participate in a more meaningful way, uh, that's always important. And we should, I, I, I think we should consistently review, um, when we need, and, 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 you know, prior to the pandemic, opportunities to actually go out and meet at other places, uh, to just make sure that we are trying to be as accommodating to the public as we can, so, uh, you know, thank you for that, for that observation, it is certainly something that we should consider, continuously consider. Um, and I welcome other thoughts from the commission on that as well. And if, and if there's a suggestion, Commissioner Brady, um, that you would like to, to put out there, we certainly can consider that.
You know, I would certainly recommend or, or suggest for consideration that, that if, if we could do it at, at five or six in the evening, so that it's, it's not particularly late, but it's, at a time where more members of the general public, uh, would potentially be able to, to attend, well, obviously, when, when we can do this in person again, uh, attend and, and provide comment, just because, you know, thinking about it from, from, you know, citizen's perspective, um, more likely to be able to, to engage with these issues and, and provide, uh, valuable comment, um, if it's not during normal business hours.
No, absolutely. So is this something that we could, uh, potentially place on the agenda, um, as, as we're preparing to enter in twenty twenty-one, maybe? Um, once we elect a chair and, and, and vice chair and other officers, that maybe it's a good time to entertain that, straight?
Okay, sound good?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
Yes, sir, wrote this.
Yes, sir, I'm moved to approve the plan as put in our packet, uh, for the first Monday of the month, at three P M, moved to adopt it.
Has been moved, uh, second.
A second.
A second.
All right, so we're moving to probably second that the calendar, um, for twenty twenty-one, all in favor, by a roll call vote.
Um, Gilchrist?
Aye.
Carnes? Um, Carnes? Yonkey?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Branham?
Aye.
Fryerson? That passes seven zero?
Uh, did we get Commissioner Carnes? Surprise?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, I did not, um, I did not, uh, receive a, um, a vote from her, um, and I don't see on the, um, as a participating, uh, member at this time. On the um, there's a participating uh member at this time.
Yeah, thanks you dropped that. Okay. All right, very good. Moving on to item C, discussional opportunity zones. Mister Price, I I would like for us to potentially defer that until uh our February meeting, if possible. I know the staff is 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 doing some work on that, and we certainly appreciate the work that the staff has been doing. But um as we get into uh, you know, being able to uh put our leadership in place, I would like for us to defer that until um twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to do that? Do we need the motion to do it or whatever?
Yes, sir. It's under an action item, so I think we should go ahead and make the motion and take a vote.
Okay, is there a motion to defer the discussion on opportunities zones to February twenty twenty-one?
So I'll make a motion.
Okay, the second.
Second.
Okay, great. They're moving to probably second that we defer the discussion on opportunities zones until uh February meeting. All in favor, signify by roll call vote.
Okay, um Gilchrist.
Aye.
Carnes. Yonkey.
Aye.
Carlisle. Carla. Mister Carla.
Man lost him too.
I excuse me, I apologize. I had my mute on again.
Um Dennis.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Fryerson.
She's raising her hand, yes.
So that passes um eight zero.
All right, great. Um next item is Chairman's report. Look, I just want to, first of all. Thank this commission for the great work that you have done uh this year on several fronts, uh for many fronts, but more specifically. The work that this commission has continued to do in preparation for our uh re code rewrite. Uh that we hope will will be receiving soon. Mister Price, can you tell me how long has it been? When did we start the rewrite um? The code rewrite?
No, I think I'll, if I'm asked Mister Crooks or Mister Delage to weigh in on it.
Uh Commissioners, I believe we started that uh back in early twenty seventeen or or I think maybe even in the fall of twenty sixteen, if I recall. It's been, it's been, it's been a couple of years.
Been a few years, yes, and um you you know, this commission has worked tirelessly to ensure. That um we get a document that we believe is can be essential to helping us with our planning development efforts. And so I want to thank you for uh your commitment on that. Uh and hopefully, uh we won't get too far within uh twenty twenty-one where we will have. Something that we can not only share with the public, but with uh county council as well. Um so I just want to thank you for that opportunity. I, you know, I'm I'm a term limit kind of guy. Uh I I'm I'm being on term limits. I I think uh I I ha I believe in service, but I also believe that it it's an opportunity for others to serve. And I'm delighted that this commission will be prepared here in in the not-too-distant future. To uh select some leadership that will continue to move us forward in the county. Uh obviously, Ms. Carnes and I both will continue to serve uh uh until council decides uh otherwise. But you I I I want to thank you for allowing me to be um your your leader uh on the planning commission. Couldn't do it without your help. Uh and could certainly could not do it without your guidance. And um it's been great to be in that role, and I look forward to weighing in on who. Uh would be interested in serving uh to continue to carry us through twenty twenty-one. And while I'm on that note, uh you you know, the the Zoom calls have been quite interesting. Uh very different, particularly for some of the commissioners who I've not had the pleasure of interacting with or meeting um because of uh the situation with the pandemic. Uh however, uh you you know, we we've had a uh guys have been very committed to to our work. And sometimes uh we've we've had challenges to uh, but we've been able to overcome those challenges in the public. Uh even with some of our commissioners who had, you know, and and I've learned quite a bit with Zoom calls on lots of different or and lots of different arenas, but. Specifically the planning commission. And so we've had a few commissioners that sometimes have weighed in on our calls and and we've not uh been able to capture that. And I know Miss Fryerson has been uh one commissioner that has uh consistently weighed in, and we've not been able to really uh. Uh see her uh in real time like the rest of us, but um I want the staff to make sure that we capture that, that that her. Her voice and and her presence has been uh with us uh in in our commission meetings, uh even though there may have been some technical difficulties. But beyond that, I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done in twenty twenty amidst a very interesting and unprecedented year. And my hope that uh things will get somewhat uh better as we get into twenty twenty-one. And with that, Price, that is all I have for Chairman's report.
Okay, um. Believe the only other item that um is the report of council, which is on page thirty-five of your agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no action needed. That was just for information purposes.
Very good, very good. Um so is there anything else to claim the attention of the commission for today?
Um I don't believe there's any at this time. Um. And I'm not sure. I know we don't have any scheduled meetings um for January. Uh I will ask again, unless Mister Cook and Mister. Delage uh if there may be any potential um. Need for a special call meeting to go over any land development code issues in January.
I I don't believe there's anything at this time, Mister Price. Um but again, if if something does come up, I guess we would just notify the commission that we would like to request that special call meeting.
Point of affirmation.
I'm sorry, was that on, Mister Dennis, was that you?
Yes, me. I know that we're not having a meeting in January, but I was wondering, is there any information that we can get on the code rewrite other than what's on that website? Because that website seems pretty flat to me. I would like more information with as much work as we're doing, considering we're gonna have a month off. That gives me. Some more time during the holidays when I'm with family and don't feel like sitting around talking to them. Um that I can have some time to read something and uh kind of get ahead of it. Uh I mean, anytime that you're looking to get ahead of something such as this, it's nice to have more information than what I can just pull off a website.
Is there any additional information that commissioners can get? Uh I mean, I will echo that too, Mister Dennis.
So in 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 Commissioners, in terms of the project, um right now, we're looking to begin wrapping up. Um I guess the the comment input from that consolidated draft, we were going to be closing that comment period. On this Friday, and from there, we would be going forward submitting the comments revisions to uh Clarion. To begin making those revisions for the consolidated draft. And so we're still looking at. Um I think as as we kind of discussed in some previous meetings, looking at having that. Early spring target timeline where everything is coming back before planning commission and then council. Um but we are still in the process of performing the revisions and updates to the zoning map and getting that zoning map ready and prepared. Um and having that ready for a public review um later on in winter. So we're still in that process. Um so I guess to Mister Dennis's point, there's not really anything that would really be available in terms of more information that is not already available. Um but as we have things that is ready to be shared and and to be available for review, we will be bringing that back before um the necessary bodies at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah, and and I believe um Mister Dennis and the rest of the planning commission, if you do have any questions or something comes up um between now. And when we meet again, please feel free to reach out to staff, um and hopefully we can address any of those questions that you have.
And Mister Crooks, just to button that up a little bit, so the final document, uh I guess in draft form, we would receive where?
Sorry, I'm having difficulty unmeeting myself. Um so we're looking at having that for the, right now, our target date would be the March planning commission meeting. So having that available prior to that, so sometime likely February is what we're shooting for at the moment.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any additional comments for the staff? Well. I'll take a point of personal privilege to say to all of you, Merry Christmas. Happy holidays to all of you. Everybody remain safe during these unprecedented times. And um we certainly look forward to, hey, we can't have a big party. Um but um you know, we'll we'll have a party in spirit here and get all back together after the new year. So thank you again for the great work that you've done. This year and um with that being said, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right. Everybody. Merry Christmas. See you soon.
See you later.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.